Hey, Mr. Dodson, you are good to go.
Okay, I'm still waiting for it. The template to come up, maybe it's. Somewhere else. Did you send it to me, Leslie?
There it is. He is sharing it on the screen, I think.
It's on the screen? Okay, great.
Well, within a bounce area.
Yeah, okay, so. Of course, I can't scroll. So I want to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission team of August 19th. Start with roll call.
Commissioner La Micah.
President.
Commissioner Dodson.
President.
Christopher Silva.
President.
Commissioner Evans.
President.
Commissioner Winn. Vice Chair Spalletta. Chair Owens. For the record, we have a quorum.
Okay, could you scroll down a little? Okay, um, if there are any items arose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. Do we have anything that came in after the posting deadline?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay, then we will move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Okay, do we have anybody that wishes to speak?
We currently have no one actively participating on the webinar, so there are no public comment.
Okay.
Do you mind if I just interject a comment?
You sure?
I've noticed on all the, all of our agendas, it always says the City Council under public comment. Change the template?
We can. We're actually updating all of the templates in the very near future, so that one definitely will be corrected. Previously, we didn't have the ability, but we will now.
Just curious, but on the City Council template, does it say to address the Planning Commission?
Maybe I'll change it that way and see if it.
Yeah. See if they catch it. Okay, it appears there are no minutes to approve, so move on. We have one item. Business items for tonight, that's a session regarding the merging with the Board of Architectural Review and the Planning Commission. The purpose of this item is to discuss meeting details, review responsibilities, and other logistics with the newly merged Planning Commission and Board of Architectural. Add it over now to Steph.
All right, thank you. Um, the purpose of this meeting, yes, to discuss all those things. I have a PowerPoint that I use as kind of an aid to walk us through some things. Well, we, we will be talking about elements of your annual work plan, and once we get to that, I definitely want to have it flow more as a conversation. So because I have the slideshow, I'll probably keep that hidden at times, and then we can pop it back up. But maybe we don't have the formality of necessarily speaking in order or taking turns. So just feel free to chime in when you have a thought that you want to share. So I encourage kind of random throwing out of ideas, and we'll refine them as we work through this. So give me a second, and I'll share the screen, and we'll go through a couple of slides, and then we'll hit on some things to, to talk about. So we're here tonight because on July 16th, the council adopted an ordinance that amended the code section that would purge the bar and the PC. And your first meeting, where you're taking on both of those responsibilities, will be next week on 8/26. So a couple of things to discuss and decide. We've been having meetings three times this month because of the merger and also just because of scheduling. If you have a preference on the second or fourth Wednesday, share that with me now. And then also keep in mind that we are meeting on the fourth Wednesday, which is the 26th, and we may not have anything for the second Wednesday, if that's what you choose. But it is likely at a certain point, just to do with timing of permit applications, that we would need to schedule a special meeting. So does anybody have any stronger feelings about the second or the fourth?
Yeah, Beth, I, the second Wednesday would be preferable for me to be the regular one, and then obviously you can make the fourth, but that's just my preference.
Anybody else? Okay.
Can I interject? Is it a hard preference that you have? Just because if there are some other meetings on the same week, we just want to make sure we're balancing stuff. So I want to know if it's a hard preference or just a preference.
You talking about for me, Leslie?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for me, that would be a hard preference.
Okay.
Gun to head, which, which of the two would I prefer second?
You got it. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Dodson, La Micah, what do you think?
That's fine with me if it's on the second Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm easy, either one.
Okay. So we'll reach out to the people who aren't participating tonight, and we'll come to a consensus, and whatever the majority is, we'll go with that. And then one thing that I do want to ask of you is if you're not able to attend our meeting, that you shoot me an email. If you think you're able to do that, that would be appreciated. You know, sometimes we're aware of specific concerns that you have regarding projects that you may have been more vocal on in the past, and it's not that we wouldn't cover that item. It's just that we would prep in a different manner, potentially to specifically address concerns that we would think would be likely to come up. So jot down my email. You probably have it because I actually sent the entire commission a couple of links to check out, and I would think that you can expect that to happen on a more regular basis. I'm not looking for a reply, but most of these would probably take five minutes to glance over, and they're kind of helpful little pieces of information or even articles that I come across that are kind of getting you to introduce a new terms, thinking in a new way, and maybe for some of you, repeating information that you know, but taking on that initiative to start sharing information with other commissioners. So if you ever have anything you want me to share with the group, I can do that without worrying about any Brown Act violations. Sound good?
Yeah, Beth, real quick.
Yes.
So I believe when, when I started on the planning commission, I was told that, you know, Rick was our liaison. So I, I take it that's sort of the role that you're stepping into is being that liaison with the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So I have in the past told Leslie, for example, if I'm going to be on vacation and missing something, but she's got a bigger, more important role now, so I, I'll let you know that in the future.
Right.
Okay, and I don't need to bother Gloria with it either.
No.
Perfect.
All right, we'll continue. Just another question for you. I know you've only had two meetings more recently with Dana Morrison, the newest associate planner and myself. But in terms of what you've seen with staff reports, even over the past year, your tenure with the PC, is there anything that you would like to share with us regarding the way our staff reports are organized, presentations? If you prefer to have actual hard copies of plans for larger developments that are happening versus single family might be easier to review, like on your computer? Let's talk about that a little bit, and if you have any preferences, share them, or any things that you would like to see switched up a little bit.
I think since we're doing everything virtually right now, at least my perspective is, you know, what we get for the staff report and what we get for that platform works just fine. I'm going to guess that if, if, if there's a plan where it's hard to see the detail or whatever, we can just send you an email and ask for, for more information. I, I missed the last meeting, so I, I haven't seen, you know, the, the staff reports or more recent examples of them that you referred to. But I'll, I'll let you know if I have any suggestions.
One, one thing that comes to mind, I remember this actually happened in the last staff report and one from the cannabis manufacturing business that tried to go in at 9/11 Hillby, is the staff recommendation kind of left it open-ended. Like, we have our findings that we have to make for certain discretionary permit types. But what we don't consider in our staff recommendation, because sometimes it's day of, is public comment regarding things. We don't know what questions you're going to ask the applicants that could raise major concerns in your minds. So I would just expect an openness with the staff recommendations, not being a hard yes or no coming from staff, but being left more open-ended to, uh, Stephen, including a couple of options for your consideration, as well as leaving it open to, you know, your decision as influenced by public comment and other potential concerns. Does anybody foresee a problem with taking that type of approach?
My only, the only question that springs to my mind is the interplay between what you just described and the resolutions that have been prepared. Are you saying that you would then prepare your resolution with a number of the options that you detail in your presentation?
You know, that would be something that we could edit, so the resolution could contain all options, and then the final version that ends up getting signed by the chair. We would just modify that or specify that that was the selected one. That could lead to us having to bring back certain things, but that was the same as if we said yes to something and you guys said no. Any other opinions on that, or can we move on?
I'm with, I agree with you.
All right. Annual work plan. What's your, what's your memory of last time you discussed your annual work plan and do some of these items look familiar to you? I took this from, I'm assuming, 2019, 2020.
Several months ago, we talked about the need to revisit the annual work plan, if I remember correctly, guys, and we, we just went over the list of items that we were going to include on that, but we haven't actually gotten into the work. And then, and then I don't know. When, the first time we talked about fence stuff, and this was probably a year and a half ago, at least when I was on board, I, I sent a memo to Rick to share with other commissioners so there wouldn't be around that violation, just with at least my suggestions on fencing. I still, I don't know if that's ever been circulated.
Okay.
The guys, have you received it?
Does what, so what's on the screen look familiar in terms of what was most recently discussed?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, um, we're not going to go through this now, but I think with the first two, and Commissioner Silva, if you could dig up that email, which should be pretty easy to search for, and share that with me. I would like to make some changes sooner than later, especially to those first two items. And I'm not going to set myself up for, for failure, but I would probably aim to have something for your consideration in our meeting in September. Now, if we go with the second Wednesday of the month, I could tell you that's not going to happen. If we go with the fourth, then that's, that's a more likely case. But the fence, walls, and hedges section, you know, even the past two staff reports for the fence exceptions, it's a it's a lot of work in detail for something that people are asking an exception to the rule for. But as far as time spent in terms of staff value and other projects that we have going on, it is an item of concern for good reason, but I think there are some changes that we can start to make that are more reflective of the community, both in terms of the topography, in terms of maybe one-way street designations, having different rules from streets on more major thoroughfares, and looking at it more as related to the actual grid of the city versus a blanket statement across the board for everything. Also, a question, do we really care if hedges? Do hedges have to be the same height as fences? Do we, do we, would we rather see greenery than a wood fence? So chime in on that a little bit. I'm just curious as to what all of you think about that.
I'm, I'm always in favor of live plants over dead wood, dead trees. So I have no problem at all with having shrubbery substituting for fences. And I know in my neighborhood, there's several houses that do that, and it's actually a very attractive one for the most part.
Yeah, I tend to agree, and I think the only concern I would have is if hedges were in a place up on a corner where they would compete sightlines for vehicles turning, or the driveway where a kid might, you know, come out, or something where it's in the front of the house, where maybe you don't have the benefit of eyes in the street, or something, because it becomes such an obstruction.
Right.
And is also if they keep, you know, up, up kept the hedges, because there's still some places in Seaside where the edges aren't kept, and it's, you know, taking over the sidewalk.
Evans, anything to share?
No, I was gonna basically agree both with Keith, but with the caveat that I think we have to be careful about just a blanket statement about it, because you're, I always think five to 10 years down the line because of my home building background. So I like to be thinking about what are things going to look like, not tomorrow, but five, 10 years from now, and in the city's case, 30 years from now.
Right. So if any of you have had thoughts on this before, just in terms of the number of projects you've seen, feel free to send me an email. Silva, I'd be waiting for yours. I also had a conversation recently with our building official. The example is the decorative entry feature that we allow for in our code. The zoning code maxes is out at six foot, six inches by six feet wide. But the building code requires clearance of six foot, eight inches. So even within that, we have contradictions going on, and it would be good for, you know, customer service and consistency across the board for that information to be equalized. That way, I can't say yes, and then somebody else turns around and says no from a different department. So there's a lot of changes that we can make, but there are some that would be more important to make sooner than later. It seems that we've been getting a bit too long for the form-based code to come in and take effect and to kind of save us from these small headaches. But in the meantime, I think it's important that we address what we can while we're working with what we have.
And I already won't keep the thread with, with the fence suggestions at the bottom of it.
Perfect, thank you.
And here, I'm not married to any of those. Those were just my initial thoughts that I wanted to share with the other commissioners as a point of launching the discussion.
All right, I'll share that with, in a manner that I can. Tree ordinance. A lot of different commissions have been talking about this. Environmental Commission's been talking about it for a while. It turns out that it's actually in the Park and Recs Commission's annual work plan, and they're listed as the responsible group. I have now somebody on the Art and History Commission talking about wanting to designate significant trees in the city, and if you think about the tree lighting we do on the Cypress on the City Hall lawn, that's a pretty unique thing for a city to have. But the idea is that we start to acknowledge what exists, and then also another piece of information that was shared is the perception that our tree permit removal fees are a little bit too low. And if we take an approach of raising those fees, then people would be less likely to do things without a permit or even just be hesitant to get caught and have to pay a more substantial fee. So I'll be looking again and closer at the tree ordinance, but if any of you have, again, ideas around that, feel free to share them with me, and we'll see what we can incorporate in kind of a first update of that, because I'm pretty certain it's been a handful of years since anything's been changed regarding that code. Can I move on, or does anybody want to chime in on anything else on this annual work plan? Like, for me, I don't understand what the sign code business survey is, or if some of these items are no longer relevant to where we're at today.
I don't even remember how that got on there. It seems to be that the sign code was something more or was balding.
Okay.
And this, this got on our agenda prior to the merger, so I'm not sure what was intended there.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Going back to the sign code, it didn't have to do with the height of the sign.
I don't know.
We have codes on that already, right? So we'd be changing the code possibly?
There's a 14-foot height limit for freestanding signs. If you're within a master sign program, that's often the case, is where you see it taller than that, like in the auto center and some of the shopping, commercial shopping areas.
My personal feeling is if we have to rank these agenda items for the year, that would be a lower one.
Right.
My opinion.
Yeah, now I don't see us having that many issues with the sign code. It's more communication with the public. They have to apply for a sign permit first, and then after that's issued, a building permit for the installation aspect. All right. So architectural review. This is what you're going to be taking on. All those items listed are the elements and types of projects that you could be looking at. The murals now, though, that has changed, but that's not yet reflected in a code change in 1762030. But those are looked at, I believe, by Art and History, and then go to City Council. One thing at the bottom to point out is that the director can call for conceptual design review prior to final action by commission or council. One project that comes to mind where this could have potentially been a good thing is like the McDonald's project, where staff was given early options, and our goal is to try to select a design option that meets our long-term goals, and also that meets code, more code sections than the, the alternative of having to go through a variance process. But if there's certain types of projects that you would like to see conceptual design review on, we can definitely encourage that decision to happen. So maybe we look at all-new commercial at a conceptual design review stage, maybe we look at residential over a certain number of units. Maybe we look at all mixed-use very early on. That way, we can have direct input with the designers before they get to the final stage of what they're ready to present as, in their opinions, a very good design. So if anybody has any thoughts right now on the potential of what you would want to see a conceptual design review on now, share those ideas. And if not, then we'll keep, keep rolling through.
Beth, I wasn't sure who the quote-unquote director was.
That would be Gloria Sterns now. Anything, or can I continue? All right. Point of architectural review, improve the aesthetic appearance of open spaces and structures, to focus on those visible from public rights away, and to establish design standards and policies promoting and enhancing good design. Things visible from the public right away, that could be residential. We talk about potential view issues. Be something as simple as an accessory structure like a fence, but also thinking about, you know, commercial projects that are more visible from our major thoroughfares, and how how we look at those in a slightly different way than how we look at single family, yet also seeing the commonalities and what is good design at different scales and different types of, of development. So there are some guiding ideas on like what is good design, but your review considerations, architectural, landscape, and lighting. So pretty much, you know, starting with your site plan, imagining yourself walking through and navigating that space, thinking about things like how this is experienced during day, how is it experienced during night, how is it functionally operational? Landscape is only looked at for certain types of projects, but I did want to get your opinion on single-family residential and tree planting, and how we want to address that. I do recall with the Board of Architectural Review, review of a second-story residential addition. Google Maps, we saw an image where there was a tree, and this was a few years back. And then a few years forward, that image just shows a picture of a stump. So if we find that a tree has been removed, currently we have two options, and those two options, well, maybe one, just one option. They have to pay double the tree permit fee. And also, there may be a replacement requirement, but that's not always the case. But the question is, is do we want to start looking at required tree plantings for a single family? And that would be a discretionary decision, because the tree code doesn't currently call for it for additions. But if you're doing an addition to your home, should that be something that we would be looking at if there's zero trees on site? And this could be yes right now, just in general, and then as we see specific projects come through, it may not make sense on a certain site. But I just want to get your feeling on that as to how we can potentially utilize what happens to have typically the most space in the majority of cities, which is single-family lots.
I, I do think that I think it's a great goal to have lots of trees, but there are parts of the city that you've got wires all around you. So there's only a few places where you can actually plant a tree that's going to grow anything more than six or seven feet. We've also got slope issues, so if you put it too close to the property line, that can cause faster erosion. So if a house already has some plants there, I'm, I'm hesitant to force people to put in more as it can create downstream issues. So that's just my take.
Any other thoughts on a tree plantings in general or specific to the question asked?
I tend to agree with Commissioner Dodson. I mean, trees as a rule make a space more green, they make it more inviting, they they reduce sort of that urban heat effect that we get, and there's a lot of benefits around here. It's not that hot. So there's a lot of benefits, but, but we have a lot of small lots and overhead power lines, and it doesn't maybe make practical sense everywhere, so I'm not, I'm not sure what that would look like from a policy perspective.
All right, something to think about, and there will be sites where there will be more room and maybe not any limitations around it, but just know that that is something that you could ask for as even a condition of approval in doing bar reviews.
As long as there's flexibility, it would be okay. As long as there's flexibility, I would be okay with.
Yeah, of course.
But if a house already has three trees. You're forcing to have a fourth.
Yeah, right. Okay, so landscaping and lighting, thankfully, we have. A few specific plans and other documents in place where we have both native and drought drought tolerant. Species recommendations. So we do have resources which people can utilize in those elements. And then lighting, more pertinent to. Commercial, I think the building plan review catches it where it's required. In single family, so you're not likely to see a lighting plan for a single family home. All right, design time, and this is very generic, but just to introduce some. Some ideas, new and old. So good design has a lot of elements in common, whether or not you like architectural style or not. They typically contain, you know, the elements that I'm going to go through. And scale and proportion is definitely one of them. It's how you relate. To the design, how you feel in a room. If you're walking up a narrow staircase that has walls on both sides versus walking up, you know, a wider one that is maybe leading to an entry of. You know, a large office building. There's different types of feels that are created in terms of how we in our. Our size, in our heights and in these human. Human forms, we relate to the buildings that we we walk through. So when you're looking at plans and. Again, both residential and commercial, and then when we get into mixed use and multifamily, it's important to. Try to experience as as best as you can in looking at both the site plan and the elevations. How it feels, how it could potentially feel. Walking next to and through that space, how it feels sitting in that space, how it feels. When you walk by that space and what type of impression it leaves on you. Is it something that's noticeable? Is it something that? Is is ignored. But more so from the experiential realm and how how it feels and in experiencing that space. What that will be like for the people who end up occupying what is being proposed. Another element that comes into that, I think about the ascent project. Terrace and Broadway, there's, I think, the buildings are three stories and some of them are. Separated by maybe twenty five to thirty feet. And that also has me thinking about, you know. Scale of the buildings and how that would affect availability of sunlight in those spaces and when shading would happen. So there's a lot of elements to think about. Both again, day, night and at different seasons and how you relate to those. Hierarchy. This is oftentimes how, you know, building entrances are easily identified over others. There are sometimes, you know. Angles used that lead you visually and physically to a certain space. Thinking about how things are are relevant to other design elements and then. Why it's important to make those. Architectural distinguishing design elements in order to. Both have good design and assist people in navigating the space. If you've ever, you know, been in a building and either gotten lost because something wasn't memorable. Or maybe every floor started to look the same. Or even in a parking garage, for example, you forget what level you're on because everything's the same. When we look at these buildings from the outside, I think that's important to consider is the hierarchy and. Where the defining elements are makes quite a statement from the public right away, which is important for. You know, the larger projects that we may be looking at and overall how the space feels and merges in with the the rest of. Everything around it.
Yeah, I was just looking at that that modernist structure. And I I know that it's come up a couple of times in terms of, I mean, that's. Fantastic looking building, but would it look okay in one of our neighborhoods from the nineteen forties? That's something that. You know, something really has a striking. Architectural plan. It seems like it's also got to fit in the neighborhood. Assume that's something that will continue to be priority of this group.
And that will come up in a slide in a little bit too, but when we talk about neighborhood compatibility, I think we're more talking about a scale. Than we're necessarily and potentially talking about style, although the form based code will have. Little bit more specific design elements in it that may guide more people towards doing something more similar than. Drastically different. So we can wait and see what happens with that, but you will definitely with the form based code be seeing. People conforming to the code, yet you may not be seeing neighborhood compatibility. To that extent, and again, like Evan said, you got to think ten fifteen years down the road. How how could this potential form based code? Change the look and feel of neighborhoods as more projects are taken on under it. All right, I'm going to continue unless anybody wants to jump in. All right, so so far we've got scale proportion and hierarchy. Context, this is kind of. Neighborhood compatibility. Silva, do you want to maybe talk about what you see in this map since you just finished off that degree plus your life experience?
Sure, if you'd like me to. In, I mean, what what I think of obviously in real estate is the first three rules of real estate are location, location, location. And, you know, there is a context site wise for for any property and and a property on the corner of. You know. Broadway and Fremont is very different from a property on the corner of Kobe and Nociva. Because of what the surrounding uses are, what the. The road width is what the traffic patterns are, what the lot sizes are. So and and we've looked at this guys when we were looking at the. Even the. The cannabis use in an office building where the context around it was offices less industrial and you had condos next door. And so, you know, all of all of those elements of what's around the property. Are very relevant in when you approve the next new project that goes into that place. And there are some places that will fit the use better than others. Is that where you're getting at, Beth?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, you know, this is sometimes how when. When we first get a project in, we have to think about things. It's less so with. Single family, but sometimes that applies too. But we look out far, you know, regionally, and then we zoom in to. A certain extent of blocks in the city, we take into consideration the thoroughfares, the zoning changes. What's adjacent? And then also what is the vision that the designer or, you know, project manager is looking. To accomplish, what are potential site issues even with adjacent. Neighbors, scale and proportion again, and then the design objectives. So. I'll share this presentation with you. You may be able to zoom in a bit more. But essentially like this type of breakdown in study is something that we typically look at as planners for. Every project that comes in and, you know, once we have a site plan, that's a very zoomed in version. But all these elements are taken into consideration when we think about context and how something works. Or could work in a specific location. So a sense of place, like I said before, your experience as as you relate in your human form to architecture. It's also. How a place feels when you're in it, what's memorable about it, whether it's an attractive place to visit. I'm sure a lot of you have a favorite place you go to, whether that be somewhere overlooking the ocean or if it be. You know. In inside of inside of a building, even even inside of your own home, lighting makes a huge. Influence on on experiencing a space as does color, as does the the height. There's a lot of elements that come into play, but sense of place is it's it's when you experience something special, whether that resonates with you on. Intellectual, emotional and also physical level. So does anybody have? Anything even in in your travels where you've gone and visited and experienced something that. You just kind of had to look up and. At and admire what you were in. That's what sense of place refers to. Anybody want to share?
I am, I sent. I, when I think of placemaking, I often think of streetscapes and outdoor spaces even more than the interior spaces. Having said that. Built a lot of homes and and built a lot of properties, so the interior space is valuable, but. You know, Venice, Italy is the most exceptional. Place, you know, I've been just because of the pedestrian character of it, the scale of the buildings, the architecture, the. The uniqueness. We don't see that sort of place built nowadays, but it, you know, that's a remarkable experience. When I think about our area and and I see what what the city is attempting to do on Broadway is to create. A a sense of place, you know, on that street, which we kind of lack so much of our commercial areas are kind of. You know. Nineteen eighty strip malls and we don't have that sort of identity that you have in downtown Pacific Grove or downtown Carmel. Or downtown Monterey, and I think the the hope is to to create a sense of place there. Through the architectural expression, through things like the road. Width and the 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 way that the the parking, the sidewalks work and the lamps and all of that stuff.
I would agree with Commissioner Sullivan. In fact, we had a friend visiting. This weekend who used to live in Seaside for many years and hasn't been back for many years. And she saw. The new Broadway, the new Lower Broadway for the first time. She was raving about it. She felt it really gave. That part of town just this different feel and. I think that's what you can do when you have the money. And the vision to do it, basically. Create a new environment and that will affect the buildings going around that.
Planning docs, we can kind of encourage when private investment happens on that street that it's done in a way that further enhances.
All right, anything else to share, people? All right, I'll continue then. All right, so let's move into colors. Some of you may know, some of you don't, but I worked for Seaside for one year. From two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight. And at that time, I do recall the Board of Architectural Review. Being very concerned with colors being used on on buildings and. You could even potentially say wanting to over regulate the color palettes that people choose. So these next few slides I'm going to go through. And then one of the links I shared with you, there's a piece of information from that on how we experience color and. Even how it's linked to cultural preferences and biases, but overall the value of it. This is one of the things from a link that I sent you. So we all react biologically. To color and to to light. We have subconscious reactions to it and then also conscious symbolism association. Certain colors are looked at in certain cultures as being. With certain colors at certain points, it's super bright and at other points it's super muted. And then personal relations, this one I I found kind of interesting as well as the next slide, but it says younger people prefer more saturated. And primary colors where older people prefer less saturated and subdued colors. And the same logic, they say, exists for extroverts and introverts. This is where it comes in. And also linking it to socioeconomic. Levels and personality. What was that?
This commission is starting to favor older people.
We're all young and hard.
Yeah, so like higher socioeconomics. A darker value, blue based reds, and then you go to the opposite side of that. So wider lighter value and yellow based reds. So we're looking at, you know, these are all the the opposite spectrums and I think as a commission that is, you know. Overseeing what good design is and issues around privacy and and views and also. Impact on the city as a larger overall color, I could say is generally a good thing to have. I don't know if it's ever a bad thing, except for when it's reflective and you might have a situation where like. Glass is having some weird reflection onto a a major intersection, for example, but overall. In taking into consideration where we're all coming from with our. Subconscious, unconscious and biases and where we stand economically and personality wise. It's it's my opinion and your opinions may differ, but to allow for freedom of expression in color versus overregulation. Is probably something that will be better reflective of. The diversity of our our city and allowing people to choose freely what they like for their home or for their business. There's a couple of examples. Barragon is a Mexican architect. Color was a very important part of his design. This is the same structure as you can see those. Yellow elements on the framed windows from the outside and then what that experience is like on the inside. But color was a major defining and important element in all of his work and definitely part of the experience. And then. Celebration of color, that can also mean in the case of the photo on the left. Not necessarily an absence of all color because there is highlights and accents happening. And the project on the left is um was actually completed by a DPZ, the firm hired. To do the seaside east shirt. So there's value in both of these. An established neighborhood on the right that gets reinvigorated by having an art project in very vibrant colors. Injected into maybe what have been a very muted and maybe even not well care for. Living environment. So the one on the left, when you think about entering into a space. The other photos that you can pull up of this development, it's beautiful, but it's 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 lacking color. It's all white. But it gives it a certain feel. It gives it a certain character. So celebration of color can mean either of those, but. Hopefully we fall, you know, somewhere in between for some things and the more expressive things we see maybe allowed through. Murals and maybe art becomes part of of buildings in that manner. And anybody like to share anything at this point regarding colors? Doesn't have to be where you necessarily stand, but. Maybe even just experiences you've had with it in other cities or in your travels again.
Can I raise a question? Because you you mentioned murals and I know that's. Lately, I've I've noticed murals just started to appear around town. We've got that one that's at the one at the marijuana dispensaries. You've got the one over at the weekly. And then that new club down on Broadway. We've got that one that's at the, one of the marijuana dispensaries, we've got the one over at the weekly, and then uh that new club down on Broadway. Yeah. So what is the process when people decide I want, I want to put something other than just the name on my, my establishment on the wall? I want to create a mural.
Yeah, I had someone contact me recently and I believe the answer, if I'm remembering correctly, is that the Art and History Commission reviews them and provides a recommendation to the city council. And the city council gives the final uh stamp of approval on that. And it is linked up to uh doesn't always have to be uh linked up to art and history or culture, but like, you know, the one on the uh, the reef, the marijuana dispensary. Um, they did something related to the ocean, because that's kind of a play on their name, right? Anybody else? I think we're nearing uh kind of the end. Let's see where we're at. This might be it, but I'm not certain. Yeah, one more. Uh, yeah, so I looked up a bunch of images and essentially this is representing probably every uh but one continent on our planet. As you can see, across cultures uh and dotted everywhere around the globe, color is used. And if you picture some of these places without, or all of them being uh very similar in color, they would definitely not be as engaging spaces. So keep that in mind. Keep in mind all the factors that influence whether or not you like something versus it, it being uh freedom of expression and uh injection of vibrancy into an environment. Uh, as long as it's not distracting or uh creating unsafe situation for people, uh color should be welcomed. So that concludes kind of a, a brief intro on some elements of design and uh color, which are going to be some of the major things you're going to be looking at when you're considering Board of Architectural Review applications. A little bit of a heads up on the first one you'll be looking at. It's a combo. So use permit still required for exterior stairs leading to second-story element as well as a second-story addition. So that will, uh, agenda will be published uh Thursday or Friday at the latest. So we look forward to um seeing how this works with you guys taking on both of those functions next week.
Beth, is that one that we've already seen in the last year, or is this a completely new submission?
Completely new. All right. Any um, anything you want to express or share about taking on those responsibilities? Or if we're good to go, then we can proceed with uh whatever's coming up next in our, on the agenda.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do you, do you expect the most uh use permit situations are also going, going to be involving these architectural review elements as well?
I can't say that at this point. We could have the case where uh somebody maybe doesn't have both aspects of their application together at once. So there could be two separate hearings. Um, having to them together as one is definitely going to be encouraged for uh any residential smaller projects that require both use permit and bar. We'll try to combine those um just to make things more efficient and to not have the applicant have to wait four to six weeks to get on to another agenda. All right, I think we're um good to continue. If there's uh nothing else to say, and I'll do my best to share what we discussed to, tonight with who's not here. And if there's anybody that you uh vibe with well, that you wanted to reach out and let them know, I'll share the presentation. That way they'll have it. Um, I'm going to mute myself now and uh let you Dodson continue on.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, Leslie, can you bring up, you already, you're ahead of me already. Okay, um, so are there any reports from the commissioners this week?
Nothing for me.
I don't have a report. I do have a question. Uh, Nochebuena, there's a big project going on right now and I was wondering what's, what's the timeframe on this? How, because it looks like it's extending pretty much all the way from Hillby to Broadway. Pretty wide swath of Nochebuena.
I can speak to that if that's helpful. Um, that's part of our pavement resurfacing phase two program. Um, the council had bonded for ten million dollars of pavement rehabilitation and about a year ago. So this is phase two, Nochebuena, from Broadway all the way to, is it Hillby? Or maybe all the way to Kimball, I'm not sure. But um, I did run by it the other day, so I see it in full force. I can get you an exact schedule of when it's supposed to be done. But there are several streets throughout the city and I knew that we were starting them now. And I think the construction on all of the streets is supposed to go through October, because that's anticipated to be the rainy season. So we try to get all of our pavement done between August and October. So hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, I see they're also doing the sidewalks on uh this many.
Yeah, there's going to be um several streets. And if you're interested, I can send you the phase two uh rehabilitation map just so you can be aware of where all the um, all of the improvements are, are being done.
Yeah, key. Great, I appreciate that.
I've got a couple of questions, Leslie, and maybe you can answer them. There has been some discussion in Seaside about the funding police, at least uh, you know, one candidate. I'm just wondering generally what the, the sense is from city council, city management uh about our police department and the, the level of support for it. You're muted, Leslie.
Thanks for that. Um, there was definitely a lot of com- community members that came forward through the defunding of the police um idea. We held a town, we held two town hall meetings, trying to understand what is it? You know, we understand the national conversation. What is it that you're looking for locally that you want us to change? What is, what are the services you're asking us to provide? Because you're saying, it's my understanding with the, the defunding of the police, you're saying we don't want our police officers to act as enforcement as well as social workers, as well as provide all these different levels of social services. So we have been opening the floor to say, what is it that you want, Seaside? What do, what is it that you need? At this point, the council did not um defund any of the proposed police department budget during our um budget discussions. I actually just reposted the final budget just two minutes ago. It's funny you say that. But what they did was they allocated, they took three hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of our reserve program. And with that, they said, we want you to hire a full-time and a part-time social worker or caseworker that potentially will be able to go out on specific calls that are like domestic violence calls or calls that are not necessarily criminal in nature, but they seem like some sort of mental health situation. We haven't figured out all the details yet. At the last council meeting, we approved the job descriptions for those, so we're moving forward with recruitment. With the remaining hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we've actually um been inviting members of our public to participate on a panel to say, let's put out an RFP for social services. Let our community service organizations that currently exist and, and community members tell us what you want. And then this panel of community members will decide where the funding is going to go for this hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So there was no effort to defund the police. But if you look at what the philosophy of defunding police is, they're saying if you put more funding, it's, it's exactly what we've been doing in our youth finance prevention program for years. If you put more funding and allocation toward prevention programs, you're not going to need police to do exactly what they're doing. Yes, there are still some bad people out there, fine. But the majority of people have just had bad circumstances, they've had bad experiences in their life, they've had bad upbringings. And if you do prevention-based programming, your police-based programming isn't going to be as needed. So it has to be some sort of transitional shift over time. So I think this is the start of that transitional shift. We haven't had, we've had member, we've had people participate on our town hall meetings, very few. Um, Craig even put something in the manifest today saying, hey, we're looking for people to participate on this panel. No one's volunteering, so we're not really sure where to go with it. But again, no funding has been pulled out of the police department budget. We've tried to allocate more money for services, whatever the community tells us they want. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, that helps a lot. And thank you. I appreciate sort of the, you know, I haven't followed it at this, our local city level, but I appreciate that. That sort of moderated approach that you guys are taking, because um, and there are some who want to just be rid of police departments. And then there are some who say what you guys have explained, which is, you know, how can we allocate resources so police officers aren't brought into other uh circumstances that are beyond them? My company was, was very involved in the launching of Rancho Cielo back when it happened. And Judge Phillips had the vision for that and really providing an opportunity to redirect you know, youth that were in the probation system and, and had gotten into trouble. And it's been very, very successful. And so um, but it sounds like that hundred eighty, you're looking at local NGOs and stuff that might be uh already involved in, in, in those sorts of projects where you can be supportive of that, that they help prevent.
There's no one that knows our community better than the people that provide services here already.
Thanks, that's really exciting. And then the other question I had was, you know, at the corner of uh Co and Monterey is the um, is the site was going to be the care facility, I believe?
Senior living facility, yeah.
They did start the demo there and everything, but everything halted. Is, is that still moving forward?
It is. One of the uh major developers, his wife passed away and the project is just stalled. So unfortunately, that's one of the, I mean, you're the planning commissioner, this is my personal opinion. Um, one of the challenges was selling land versus land leasing. Um, is you can sell your land to developers and then they can just land bank it and develop it whenever they want. Unless you have a very strong performance um condition built into the, the purchase of the land. So we didn't have very strong uh performance provision built within that sale of the land. And so it's kind of, we're just sitting here waiting on them now. So um, as I think we mentioned previously, Kurt Overmeyer is no longer at the city of Seaside. Um, so we're in the process of looking for an economic development director that's going to help us work through all of those development projects that we have ongoing. Um, so unfortunately, I think it's going to cause a little bit of a delay in some projects. Craig is a certified planner and he's been doing economic development for many years. So he's stepping in, doing um into all the in-process development projects. But um, I still think there might be a lag on some projects, but I'll bring this one back up to him.
Well, I'm just curious, because I noticed, you know, especially since economic conditions have changed so much in the last several months. I wasn't sure if, if financing had blown up or if something had happened. And then do we have a sense of at all how many businesses locally uh might be affected and ultimately shut down because of uh, you know, the COVID? You know, all the quarantine and shutting, you know, the closing of businesses and them not being able to recover.
Yeah, no, that's a really great question. Actually, something that I'm working on right now, we're hoping to get out the door within the next thirty days, is the city council that approved a small business loan, you know, a small business loan, um either twenty-five hundred or five thousand dollars. It's not going to be much, but they and, and I just, I just, it happened to be just pushed on my desk this week. So we're trying to get it up and out the door to help these businesses who are, who are suffering. Um, one of the things that we've adopted is we've uh adopted an emergency ordinance not um mandating no evictions until September thirty-first. So for commercial or residential properties, and that goes in line with the state's um current guidelines as well. And I think that's been one of the number one things that has helped some of our businesses continue to survive. Um, this low business loan, again, it's just a smart, it's just a very small drop in the bucket, but we think that might be a small assistance. We did get a United Way grant um for, you know, just a small amount of money, because everyone's fighting for dollars right now. We did get some CARES Act funding um that we're going to be trying to allocate towards different types of economic incentive programs. But we don't have a sense just yet, and that's a really great question. I wonder if we can put out a um, some sort of survey to our local business saying, what is it that you need the most? How many of you have been impacted? What is it you need the most? But on the application for that small business loan that we're going to be including is um the, the, the impact to it, how you've been impacted, how many employees you had before, how many employees you have now? Because I think we can gauge that as far as unemployment. Um, we're trying to think of some other economic drivers that we can ask them that are not confidential that can give us some, a little bit more data on those business loan applications. So these loans are, again, a really small amount of money. We're trying to make it as absolute easy as possible to get the, this money just distributed to people. The council adopted um or allocated up to two hundred thousand dollars for these loans.
Thanks for those updates. I appreciate it.
So if you guys don't have any more questions, I have a few things I wanted to share with you too, if that's okay, Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
So I just want to let you know, we do have city council meetings tomorrow night. Um, one of the main, it's not a very heavy agenda. Um, I have to tell you, everyone was really surprised that we only had a hundred pages in our agenda packet. They were like, this is going to be a light meeting. How interesting. So uh, the one main item that we have on there is the second reading of our fireworks ordinance. So we do have a lot of political positioning on behalf of TNT fireworks within the local community. So um, either way, if you are in favor or you are not in favor of illegal fireworks, that, that idea is up for debate tomorrow night. We are not sure that the council is going to stick with their original determination. They originally had decided that they wanted to either put it to a ballot measure or just ban it outright. They may be reconsidering. And one of their main factors for reconsideration is the amount of benefit that our community-based organizations get from the sale of those uh safe and sane fireworks. Because it, you know, those community-based organizations do good work on our community. So that's up for debate tomorrow night, seven o'clock. Um, there was a new manifest out today from the city manager. I don't know if you guys are on the distribution list. If you want to be, let me know. Otherwise, it's posted on our website. It has some details. Um, it, it hasn't come out as frequently as it used to, but it shares some inner workings of things that are happening. And one of them, what's happened today has been a little bit impacting. So there are now four fires currently blazing in our region. None within the city limits of the city of Seaside, and we're really grateful for that. But we're still understanding that we are not an island and our staff members do live within these other neighboring communities. So we have had over ten staff members, if I count correctly, that have been evacuated from their homes. We've had one staff member who's lost their home already. Um, so we're just trying to make sure that our community understands, you know, we're all in this together as, as if we didn't need anything else, right? Um, but if anyone is interested, and this is mostly for anybody who will be watching the meeting via YouTube or later, if anyone is interested in assisting in the effort, the red, we contacted the Red Cross, we contracted CalFire and all the different organizations that typically take donations, because people call us and they say, what can we do to help? Because of COVID nineteen, there's no capacity to take any physical donations because they can't ensure that it's COVID-free. So they're asking either for monetary donations, or if you go through the monterreyrecovers.org website, that's a way that you can link up resources to needs. And that's a regional website. That was established just prior to the big surf fire that we had. Was it last year or the year before? And so this is a really good resource for our community, because people say, I need mattresses, I have mattresses. I need lollipops, I have lollipops. And so people in the community can um combine together. So if you hear of anybody who wants to help, um, that's the way that we've found through the organizations that are fighting these battles, that's how people can be helped. So just watch the monterreyrecovers.org website. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Thanks so much for being here tonight, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um.
Thanks for so much for being here tonight, girls. I have to add that, sorry.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, everybody.
People.
Thank you all.
Everyone, thank you.
Do we have a movement to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you, everybody.
Take good care. We'll see you next Wednesday. Take good care. We'll see you next Wednesday.